Okay, so I'm gonna bang the gavel. It's 6:30. We're not gonna have David tonight. And I don't know about Christine. I can see Bill now. I can't see his picture, but I can see that he's there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I'm gonna bang the gavel and call the order, the Lennox Public Schools School Committee Meeting of January 25th, 2021. And the first order of business is is the hearing of any visitors. And I don't I don't know who might be raising their hand, so.
Let me check. I do not see any hand raised.
Okay. We'll move on to correspondence. I did have two letters from or emails from Karen Romeo-Legay regarding the sports programming. And the ski team was, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just doing it from memory here. The ski team was thankful that we approved the skiing. But in reflecting on how they could make it work this year safely, they felt they couldn't do rental program, which is run by the Nordic Club. But it would allow young skiers who maybe just wanted to try it out to rent. They felt they couldn't do that because of the close contact would be necessary to do that. They were not gonna compete in any of the competitions because of the number of reasons. But basically that you gotta take a bus, which we weren't gonna do. Bathrooms were gonna be marginal at best. It was just not gonna be a good situation, so while they were thankful that we approved the program, they also felt that they couldn't run it the way they would like to run it fully. But they are, they're gonna run it. And they had 21, as of the letter I had from Karen a couple weeks ago. They had over 20 people signed up, but normally they would've had 40 or 45 people, so.
I thought I saw 31 had signed up.
Okay, well, that's higher than what I initially heard.
Yeah.
And the second one was hoping that we could waive-
All right, Bob, can I help you for just one second?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're always in the visitors' label. Can we promote her to be a presenter?
Oh, Christine? I can't.
I just, I just noticed her, so I just did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here, thanks.
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
So the second thing was, they were hoping that we could waive the athletic fee this year. Partly because the kids are getting a much shorter program. There's not as much need for the the athletic fees to be collected. And, you know, given the COVID situation, given people's financial situation, they thought that it would be, they were requesting that we waive the fees for the sports this winter. So that's something that will come up later on, but I just wanted to mention. That was the correspondence I had. Now, we don't get a picture of Bill, I guess. Is that right, Melissa?
Yes, it wouldn't let me promote him to a panelist. Sorry, Bill. It won't let me. So he can probably can't see him.
Okay, so it's now time for the board report. And the school committee meeting minutes of January 4th.
Mr. Chairman, I make the vote.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion about the minutes from January 4th? Hearing none? Call for a roll call vote. Fran Sorrentino?
Francis Sorrentino, aye.
Molly Elliott?
Molly Elliott, aye.
Bob Munch?
Aye.
Emery O'Brien?
I'll abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, that's true. And Christine?
Christine Morrow, aye.
And Bob Vaughn, aye. Okay, I'm gonna give an update on the superintendent's search committee. This is, you know, committee knows this already, but the search committee did, we interviewed eight candidates over four nights back in early January, the first two weeks in January. Last week, the committee met and to determine who our finalists would be, and, you know, after probably an hour and a half of discussion, we determined that we would bring, be bringing two candidates forward. And I want to, and those two interviews will be tomorrow night. Beth Choquette at 5:30. And Mark Goslin at 7 o'clock. And I want to thank the committee members from the school committee. Bob Munch, Anne Marie, and Christine. From parents, Laura Sestone, Liz Wybrecht, and Molly Rivest. From the faculty, Jim Curry, Gene Dries, Michelle Johnson, and administrator Brenda Kelly. And community members Fran Valli, Veronica Fenton, and Keith Belton. And Fran and Veronica had served on the committee in prior years, as you may, many of you may recall. So we're, we'll be going forward. These will be public interviews tomorrow night, and the link can be found on the lennoxps.org website under the section where it's leadership, and you'll find the link there. Amy, do you want to clarify that exactly where the link is for people? Unmute. Unmute.
Thank you, sorry. It's under local governance, school committee, and school committee meetings.
Okay, so you got, you gotta make three or four clicks, but the link will be there, and that's the easiest way to get in.
Yeah, and then scroll down for the date.
Yep. So the interviews will start at 5:30 and end at around 8:00. And the meeting will continue with deliberation by the school committee. So now I'd like to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the permission of the chair, I'd like to take up the topics in a different order than they appear on the agenda. And I'd also like to, to mention a matter that you raised, Mr. Chairman, based on correspondence you received, which you reported on. First item I'd like to address is resumption of in-person instruction on January 19th. As members of the committee know, excuse me, the Lennox Public Schools resumed the hybrid model of in-person instruction on Tuesday, January 19th. I spent part of that morning at each school to observe students come into the school for the first regular education in-person instruction since November 24th. The first days back in session have, except for one factor, been as our teachers, support staff, and administrators would have hoped. They've been businesslike and uneventful. The one discordant note in our in-person presumption of hybrid instruction has been the large percentage of students who've opted to remain in fully remote instruction despite our school's physical reopening. On Friday, January 25th, four days into having students back in school, 305 students enrolled at Morris Elementary School. 67 students, or 22% of those enrolled, were learning remotely. At LMMHS on that same date, of the 454 students enrolled, 303 students, or 66.7% of enrollees in grades 612 through 12 were learning remotely. Of all those enrolled in the Lennox Public Schools as of January 22nd, 51.3 were attending school in person, and 48.7 were remaining in remote instruction. Since our students returned to in-person instruction on October 5th, we've given parents the option of having their children attend school in person for two and a half hours per day, or to have them educated remotely. I'm hopeful that as the weeks go by, more parents will come to recognize that lack of evidence tying school attendance to transmitting this, the SARS-CoV-2 virus, even where the positivity rate for tests administered exceeds 3% or 5% or whatever numbers selected as the warning signal on the Commonwealth's COVID-19 dashboard for the introduction of special precautions in a community. As the awareness of a lack of evidence of in-school spread, which is due, that is, that lack of evidence of in-school spread is due to the extensive and enforced hygiene measures we take in both schools and that schools throughout Massachusetts take. We hope as the awareness of this is recognized by parents, we hope that this recognition will result in the return of more students to school when the opportunity arises. I'd like next to address the Professional Development Day on January 15th. Friday, January 15th, 2021, was a scheduled half-day for students. The remainder of that day was devoted to virtual in-service training for the school's faculties. At Morris, part of the professional development time was devoted to a review of the health and safety protocols in anticipation of students and staff members returning for in-person instruction on Tuesday, January 19th. This was followed by a presentation by Daniel Marco of Canyon Ranch, whose work that day with teachers focused on mindfulness, in particular, bringing mindfulness into the classroom environment and self-care for faculty members. The last 30 minutes of the day on January 15th at Morris allowed teachers to prepare their classrooms for the resumption of hybrid instruction, including both in-person and remote students in each cohort the following Tuesday. The professional development offered to staff members working with students with special needs was entitled Creative, excuse me, Creating Inclusive Schools and Classrooms. The trainer for this session was Dr. Lisa Decker, nationally-recognized expert on social-emotional learning, who is affiliated with the University of Central Florida. Subsequent sessions with Dr. Decker are made available to members of the Student Services staff. Paraprofessionals are scheduled to receive training in issues associated with implicit bias provided by William Rebus Associates on their own time. The district is covering the cost of these sessions through a federal grant administered through DESE. Finally, Lennox Memorial Middle and High School spent the afternoon of January 15th meeting to review the plans for developing intrud department sessions during which the scheduling for students for the fall will be dealt with. Yet no matter how far away it seems, or rather, I should say, yes, no matter how far away it seems, the fall is always a high priority in mid-to-late winter for high school departments and in particularly guidance. The afternoon focused especially on effective ways to enable struggling learners to reach their highest achievement goals. The areas discussed included online classes, night school, and summer school, a matter about which we will be coming forward to the school committee with further information as the winter proceeds. The matter that I wanted to bring up, which the chairman mentioned, has to do with student activity fee for athletics. I want to advise the committee that that issue during an abbreviated, that is, the issue of the activity fees during an abbreviated winter season came to my attention late last week. It's my understanding that the school committee approves student activity fee rates, and the committee should therefore deal with the status of those rates during, excuse me, a shortened and restricted winter sports season. The matter arose too late to have it placed on the agenda for this, the January 25th meeting. I want to advise the members of the school committee that I intend to bring a recommendation forward to the committee on the 2021 winter athletic fees at the meeting a week from tonight, that is, on Monday, February 2nd. Moving, moving to the next topic. As members of the school committee know, the General Court passed what is known as the Student Opportunities Act in 2019, and Governor Baker signed the act into law. The SOA, as it's known, has two stated purposes. One is to rectify the inadequacy of school district funding throughout Massachusetts that has followed from the state's reliance for almost 30 years on a now antiquated formula for distributing Chapter 78 to communities and regional school districts. Growth since 1993 in costs associated with health insurance for employees and other cost centers that were not as prone to high rates of inflation in the early 1990s as they have since become. The other purpose of the SOA is to address extraordinary fiscal demands posed to school districts by groups of students that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's accountability system refers to as high needs. High-needs students are those eligible for free or reduced lunch or who have individualized education program plans, that is, IEPs, or who lack fluency in reading, writing, and speaking English, called English Language Learners, or those who are counted as belonging to racial and ethnic minorities. A given student may, of course, belong to more than one of these groups. As members of the committee may know, two things currently characterize the Commonwealth's demands under the Student Opportunity Act. One is that every district in Massachusetts, regardless of its demographics, academic performance overall, as measured by the Commonwealth's accountability scheme, or its fiscal status, must submit an SOA plan to address the needs of those who fall into needy subgroups. The other is that the Commonwealth's FY21 budget, the first year of the SOA's supposed boost in financial support, contains no money whatever to support the objectives of the SOA. In other words, each district was to have presented a plan to DESE by January 15th, which Lennox has done, that proposes addressing the needs of one or more of its subgroups with funding that hasn't been provided. The small overall enrollment of the Lennox Public Schools precludes DESE's identifying any subgroup of sufficient size to be identifiable as underperforming according to what the Commonwealth deems satisfactory grade-level performance. We are aware, nevertheless, that by definition, one of these subgroups is underperforming. That subgroup is composed of students with IEPs, where it is a necessary legal condition of a student's having an IEP that the student is underperforming in school in one or more core subject areas. The focus of Lennox's SOA plan is, therefore, to improve educational services, in particular, those related to academic performance in the elementary level in order to raise the performance of students on IEPs in grades kindergarten through five. The elementary focus of the plan represents the best long-term commitment of student funds to ensure student success, given the relatively low turnover in Lennox students as they advance through the grades. The SOA plan instructions required that the district filing the report commit to specific expenditures on specific research-based approaches to improving special needs students' academic performance. The plan's format is, therefore, that it expects specific sums of money identified by January 15th to be allocated in FY22 on specific instructional approaches, additional manpower, and other costs that the district commits to incurring. We have not done that. The reason is simple and ought to have been apparent to the drafters through the legislation. Such a plan would entail fiscal commitments that neither I, as superintendent, nor the principals, nor the director of student services can effect without the school committee's approval. And in asking the committee to make a specific commitment to specific funding in early January could affect the entire rest of the FY22 school budget. I've therefore informed DESE that commitments in the area proposed by Lennox's SOA plan will emerge through the budget process. I see no other course of action to follow here. Finally, I want to speak briefly as an introduction to the budget overview that will take place tonight. The details of the budget you have received, and which we'll discuss briefly tonight, will be provided by Assistant Superintendent Melissa Falkowski. Before asking Ms. Falkowski to take over, I would like to make the following points. In presenting the proposed budget for the school committee to discuss, receive, and consider community action, and for it to approve, either as presented or amended, the documents you have provide adequate funding for a level service budget. We've heard from the town administrator and the town of Lennox Finance Committee's liaison with the school committee that Lennox's finances looking toward fiscal year '22 are neither dire nor robust. We have been asked to sustain what we have. We have sought, therefore, to present a budget the overall appropriation for which would fall near, if not precisely, at the 3% increase that we've been advised to make this budget's goal. Having been interim superintendent for more than 15 months, I've had an opportunity to observe the district's operations and programming carefully through most of FY20 and all of FY21 to date. I've called the committee's attention to areas in which I believe additional personnel could result in upgraded operations, coordination of instruction, and more effective teaching. One step would be the hiring of a district-wide curriculum coordinator. Another would be appointment of a coach for teachers at both schools that could demonstrate and support our instructional personnel in improving student learning by making more constructive use of personal electronic devices, as well as implementing lessons and activities that utilize sophisticated software. The last step would be the hiring of a vice principal for LMMHS's middle school. Each of these steps, if taken, would bring substantial benefits to the district. None of them is proposed in this budget. If a future superintendent shares my perception of what would benefit the Lennox Public Schools, then she or he may choose to include these in a budget proposal at a time when fiscal resources are more plentiful. I cannot see that reducing our instructional support workforce to make it possible to create these positions, or that eliminating traditional and popular aspects of our overall programming is the way to pay for such additions. That would, I believe, be adding a benefit by causing a detriment. That said, the budget we propose tonight, the details of which will be scrutinized in subsequent meetings, will preserve everything that has made the Lennox Public Schools a highly successful district. That is, a place that ably fosters the academic, intellectual, social, physical, and emotional development of the children whom we exist to serve. This is not the budget of a district in retreat or in the process of retrenching. This budget preserves everything that has made the Lennox Public Schools excellent. Permit me to make two concluding points. First, I want to stress that the budget which you see, excuse me, the budget which you will see the bottom line of tonight is an unfinished product. What we're presenting tonight exceeds by a relatively small but stubborn amount the increase for FY22 over FY21 that the town is proposing we not exceed. As an administration, we're aware of the town's financial situation looking forward to FY22. Therefore, in the weeks between tonight and the March 22nd budget vote, we will work with the committee and the district's leadership to move the total local portion of the overall budget nearer the 3% that the town administrator has asked us not to exceed. Second, I want to state my gratitude for the remarkable and long-sustained support of Town of Lennox officials and the citizens of this community for the Lennox Public Schools. The considerable strengths of this district, which can be seen by even a casual observer, are due in no small measure to that sustained financial and moral support. In a time of fiscal uncertainty, that support persists. The district's administrative team and I look forward to your scrutiny of the budget as we proceed. Mr. Chairman, if I could now turn the presentation over to Ms. Falkowski.
Could I?
Definitely.
One question on one of the points before we move to the budget?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on some comments you made, Dr. Cameron, on the reopening of schools. If I heard you correctly, and I'll first ask to verify that I did, it sounded like a large percentage of our LMMHS students opted to stay remote?
Yes.
Something like two-thirds?
As of Friday, yes, two-thirds.
Okay, and that stands in contrast to Morris, where 80%, roughly 80% opted to return.
That's correct.
Okay, I found that surprising, the number at LMMHS. Not so much maybe the Morris number, and I just wanted to pause on that for a moment. I wonder if you could say anything more. Is that do we understand the reasoning for that? Is that just around risk, you know, and fear of transmission in schools, as you alluded to, or is there something else going on? Do we know if similar numbers are being experienced at other districts as they're returning to in-person, or, you know, anything else you might, you might share on that?
Some of what I'm gonna say is, let me call it, if it's not an oxymoron, informed speculation. Part of the reason is what you cited, Dr. Morrow, that the, I think there is a portion of the population at the secondary level more manifest than at the, at the elementary level, where the families are reluctant to send their, have their students attend school in person because of apprehension about contracting the virus. I do believe, though, there are other factors in play. I should note also that if you look not at physical attendance rate, but at participation rates, whether in school or at, or remote, the rates for both the elementary school and the secondary school are pretty high. I don't have an exact figure. I know it's over 90% for LMMHS, considerably over 90%. And I believe that at the end of last week, the participation rate for students at Morris was 97%. So it's not that kids are not taking part in instruction. I think one of the reasons that we see lower in-person participation in the middle, excuse me, in high school grades has to do with the number of staff members at the high school, but not at the elementary school, who have presented medical evidence supporting their absence from school provided by healthcare providers who consider them to be at greater than normal risk of contracting the virus. And they have, I think that has an indirect but pronounced effect on student attendance, because we have I'd have to ask Ms. Nowitzki exactly what the, what the number is, but it's someplace between 12 and 15 teachers at LMMHS who are teaching remotely. And I've heard more than once that students are not enthusiastic about coming to school to sit in a classroom to watch a teacher on a, on a computer screen. They could stay home and do the same thing and not have to go through all the rigmarole of getting to school. So there, I don't know, there may be other reasons as well. There may be personal family reasons, which I'm not aware of. But I think those two reasons, that is, apprehension about contagion and a reluctance on some part of the, some percentage of the high school and middle school population, I think particularly the high school, not to come to school if what they're gonna get out of it is watching a computer screen. Are there, are, they're certainly major contributing factors.
Bill, my recollection is there are 14 such teachers at LMMHS and one at Morris.
I think that's, we, I think we have a second.
We do have a second one at Morris, you're right.
She has a sound medical reason for not coming to school, coming to work personally.
I just want to add, Bill, if I could, that Principal Kelly has stated that we've asked parents to let us know if they're coming back for February 1st, and we do have more students coming back to Morris in person, February 1st.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. She did, she did mention that today. You're right.
I appreciate that, that information. I appreciate that information. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, what we can do, if anything, at this stage, but it definitely seems like something we want to keep tabs on and follow along and, you know, and pay attention to. I mean, I think if, well, you know, maybe both of those root causes, if they, if they turn out to be true, would be improved as we see the vaccination becoming more available, particularly to our faculty and staff.
One would certainly hope so, Dr. Morrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, and.
Oh, and I was just going to chime in that I, I'm happy to hear about the participation rates being as high as they are. Do we have a sense statewide what participation rates are, or how, I don't know where, to give a marker?
I can speak about that from two sources. One of them is information that I have about Massachusetts, and one of them, which is anecdotal, is my own son who teaches middle school, excuse me, high school Spanish in Newport News, Virginia, where they have not been in school all year. They've been remote entirely. That's a very large school district. What you'll, what you see, and this is, this is borne out by the experience in large communities like Springfield, for example, which also has not been back in school since last March. What you see is, and it's not a surprise, is an erosion over time of students' engagement online. It simply is not, month after month after month, it is not stimulating. And teachers can use their best, make their best efforts, and some of them may be very talented at using these formats to provide the best instruction that can be provided by these formats, but for a number of reasons, which, you know, we could all, we could all cite some of them, but, but over time, the number of students tends to decline. What happened the first week at LMMHS is there were more kids out on Tuesday than there were on Wednesday, and there was, there was an increase, not staggering numbers, but there was an increase of students by the end of the week, Friday. There were, I would, I'm working from memory here, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it was maybe 40 students who had been remote on Tuesday who were in school by Friday. So I'm not sure what to attribute that to, except maybe letting somebody else be the point on that patrol and see what happens when you go to school. And since nothing bad seems to have happened, maybe it induced some others to, to come back.
Okay, I'm going to jump in before Melissa. And Bill, I'm going to click on a button to promote you to panelists. I don't know what will happen, but you might click, after I do it, you might click and see if your video comes up. And Melissa, do you want me to go, to put your presentation up on shared screen, or can you do that?
I think I can do it as a co-host, so let me try to do that.
Okay.
So are you seeing the cover page for the budget overview?
We are.
Okay. So this is the year 22, 2022 preliminary budget overview. We are, again, going to be discussing over the next few weeks, the following program budgets. We have elementary education, secondary, which includes middle and high, special education. Part of special education and student services is the other school services, such as English Language Learner and 504 Services, Administration and Support, which is School Committee and Central Office, and Operations and Maintenance, which are the buildings, the grounds, the custodians, that area. All of these different program budgets are summarized in the, what has been called the crosswalk, but is a summary of last year expenses, this year anticipated, next year anticipated expenses, and percentage increases or decreases. So some background information on the budget, the guideline from Chris Ketchin, the town manager, is, you know, he puts in a 3% placeholder increase for the school department each year, and that is to be inclusive of retirement benefits and health insurance increases. So the number that Chris has been working with and we've been made aware of and are aware of is $14,310,486. That is 3% higher than fiscal year 21, the year that we're in budget. So that is our goal, and that's what we're working towards. We also want to maintain or add to our special ed stabilization reserve fund at the end of this year to assist in any future potential student outplacement obligations. We're currently at 200,000. I believe that the town set a maximum of 250,000, so we want to be able to continue to do that and keep that in reserve should, should the need come up, the needs comes up for more services. We have contractual obligations to all of our units and administrators, Unit A, C, custodians, Unit C are the paraprofessionals, the clerical, food service employees, and their raises and step levels changes are all contractually obligated already. They're all, each contract goes through next year. Revenue accounts are once again being used to offset the operating budget, and first and foremost, it's school choice, then non-choice receipts, which are tuitioned in students from other districts.
Melissa, that's showing on the screen.
It's not showing?
No, there you go.
Right there.
Nope.
What are you looking at?
You're looking at the preliminary budget information.
Yes, I'm right here at this point. So I'm just going through the.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. So also athletics, we use some of the athletics revolving fund to offset expenses in that program, facility use, if we have outside entities come in to rent the buildings, we do use that for custodial overtime that it does create. Duffin Theater, any receipts that they receive will offset some of their expenses in the operating budget. Circuit Breaker is a special ed reimbursement account, and there is a professional development revolving fund that we can take some of the funds from. So operating budget minus these revenues equals the net operating budget, or what I'm calling the net operating budget. Capital purchases and projects are not in the operating budget, that's a separate budget, and grant funds are not included in the operating budget. So when we get to the end of the slide presentation, you'll see I have a slide that details grants and anticipated revenues from grants. That's in addition to the operating budget. It doesn't reduce it, but it does help us run the district, the grant, the grant funding that we get does help us to run the district each year. This, this graph will show you, this chart will show you the variance between fiscal year 21, the year that we're in now, and fiscal year 22 by program. Broken out elementary, secondary, special needs again. So you can see in the, in the second column, fiscal year 2021, the total for each department, and then the total for the operating budget. And 2022 is what we're anticipating at this point in time to be the expenditures for each of those departments. The next column details the variances, and then the last column gives you a percentage variance. So you can see that we have some increases in areas and mild, lower increases than others. The elementary increase is higher than it has been in the past, and that's due to a few things. There was an accounting change for a, for personnel into that budget. We added also days from the nursing budget from the high school into the elementary. The guidance counselor was increased from a .6 FTE in fiscal year 20 to a .8 FTE in 21. So all of those will boost up that percentage rate. A lot of the other items, non-personnel items, have remained level or lower, or just a tad higher based on needs. The secondary incorporates the middle and high school, and that increases at 2.82%. We are seeing three retirements, five total in the school, but three in the professional teaching area, one in clerical and one administrator. So that does help with the increases in salary levels, and again, a lot of the other non-personnel areas have remained level, slight increases or slight decreases based upon need. Special needs, we do, we do have an increase there, and it is mostly due to anticipated needs. We did have a pair that moved into that budget from a grant, and the grant is now covering items such as out-of-district tuition or transportation and not personnel. So you'll, you'll see a bit of an increase there, and we had a new, a few new positions with, that were hired at a higher step than the previous, so you'll see an increase there. So that's the majority of that 6.38% increase. Other school services include 504 services and ELL services, and the decrease that you're seeing there is due to 504 services determined not to be necessary in the upcoming fiscal year, so we're seeing a bit of a drop there. Central administration, 1.95%. That includes school committee and all of the expenditures for the central office. And that mainly is salaries. We do have an open superintendency, so there is a salary, somewhat of a salary increase in that line. Operations and maintenance is at 2.06%, which is typical. A lot of the utilities and maintenance items have remained fairly level, so the majority of that is contractual increases obligations. And then the reserve contingency, that's a fund where we include an amount to cover unanticipated expenses typically in the special ed area or in new hires or in administrative contracts. So we do have a slight increase there. The, can you see the total percentage at the bottom of the increase, which is at 4.45%? Are there any questions on this slide? So this, this is a graph that shows you, you know, I say quite often we're service, we, a lot of our expenses are in personnel, and this, this shows you that we have just under $2 million in other expenses, 11.1 million in personnel expenses, and that includes all types of personnel, salaries, substitutes, anything that has to do with people being in the building is included in that. And that's exclusive of health insurance benefits. So the personnel is about 85%, other expenses are about 15%. So as I mentioned earlier, we do offset the operating budget with revenues that we have in our fund balances in this fiscal year. So what we collect this year, we offset the operating budget with next year. We anticipate being able to use 1.71 million of school choice, 60,000 of non-choice, 30,000 of pre-K, Circuit Breaker 11,000, Athletic 11,000, and other smaller receipts like facility use, Duffin Theater at 33,000. So that equals 1.855 million of an offset to the operating expenditures. So this breaks out all of our programs, last year's amount, this year's amount, and the difference, less receipts, and you'll notice a difference here, we have less receipts to apply to offset the operating budget. This is because we didn't, we do, we haven't rented the buildings this year. We did have with remote learning a decrease in tuition accounts. So there's some areas where we have had to pull back a bit because we just did not see the revenue this year because of the type of year we've been in. So that brings the total net budget for '22 at 11.2 million, which is a 6.11% increase over the net budget last year. And that is, you know, less receipts, a higher number to start with, and less receipts. And then insurance benefits last year were at 3.1 million. We're anticipating the insurance benefits with retirees moving over and replacements coming in to be at 3.260%, which is a 2%, 3.260 million, which is a 2% increase. So total inclusive of benefits would be 14,501,319, which is 5% increase over last year's. We do receive other revenues that help us run the district. They don't offset the budget that we just talked about, but we do receive allocations from federal and state and private grants. Private grants aren't listed here, they're numerous, and they're small in nature. So we do receive federal grants like Title I, II, III, and IV, and IDEA, and these are the allocations for fiscal year 2021 and anticipated allocations for next year. The grants at the bottom in purple are pandemic relief grants. We don't anticipate to receive any of these going into next year. We may receive something in the spring. I have some information on funding that's coming, but nothing solidified yet, so I'm estimating that allocation at this point to be zero. That will change as we move forward, I believe. And so as I said, this is an, in addition to our operating budget, doesn't offset any of the expenditures in the operating budget, but it does add to the, helping with the operation of the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, or try to anyway.
I have a question about how we're going to proceed in the future weeks here. Normally, we would be sitting at the town hall with our big 200-page budget book in front of us. How do you anticipate that we'll be tackling the different areas starting next Monday?
So I've been working with the principals and the superintendent throughout this process, and we will continue to do so. I can identify some areas that I feel we may have some luck in, but I need their input. They're the ones on the ground and running the building, so we do need to have their input. So I anticipate that that's what we'll be doing, is discussing it with the administrators of the buildings and the departments.
I guess what I was wondering.
See where we might be able to.
Will we be going page by page through the booklet? Will we, will we be picking up booklets?
So I sent out the PDFs of all of the budgets. If anyone wants a printed copy, we can certainly print one off, and I do have at least one request for one, and they'd be available at the town hall if you wanted to pick them up, or I can see if we can deliver them to you. But the principals, the administrators will have that budget that you have, and we can share that screen and go through it every week. So next week, it'll be administration and elementary, and there's one other, I think operations and maintenance maybe is part of it, but we'll go through all of that next week with the PDFs that you received at the end of last week, and we can share those screens and go through it, and the, you know, the department principals will, will speak of. principals will, will speak about the budgets at that point.
Okay, yeah, I think that from my perspective, I'm just trying to think of, of a way to do this efficiently. You'll have everything posted on the website for townspeople, anybody who wishes to, to see the preliminary budget.
Yep.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, this is such, gonna be such a different way of doing it than I've done for the last thirty eight years. I'm just thinking if the department heads, the elementary principal, the high school principal, and department heads could just highlight the changes or significant, the significant things so that, and then, and, and, and reference the page numbers so that we can, we can skip to them. And committee members may, you know, may also have questions on any page. I'm just trying to think of an efficient way to do it. Via, because we won't be flipping our books open on the screen here. You'll be bouncing around from page to page if, if we do that, and we can do that. But I'm just trying to think of an efficient way to go through it. And I, you know, we can talk about that further, but.
Yeah, I think, as you suggested, a summary page with highlighting changes, increases or decreases in the budgets would greatly help.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I, I took a quick look at some of your budget sheets, and there were some pretty drastic percent differences in some of the lines. And I'm, you know, I'm if, that's the first thing I'm gonna look for, are these, are these big differences.
Yeah. And I, and I do, a lot of them are explainable or an accounting function. I don't, you know, there, there's one that comes to mind in operations and maintenance where the, the alarm systems were sort of switched. So you see a decrease at the middle and high end and increase at the elementary.
Okay. Now, I had a question on the, on the budget. Is there anything in this budget that we would consider attributable to the COVID nineteen issues? Are there any special line items or anything in here that would try to capture that extra cost?
The only one that I, that I think of at this moment is tech licenses, technology licenses. There may be a few in there that are, you'll, you will see an increase in those line items at both levels. And there's a lot of remote learning taking place. We do have a private grant that is paying for, that reimburses us for the platform that we use to teach the kids. So that's not in there. But there have been other requests for, throughout this year for software that helps with remote teaching and learning. So there's some of that in there. But as far as, as personnel and things of that nature, there is not any expenditures like that in there.
So the, the grant for the, I guess it's Canvas. Is that the one you were talking about?
Yes, or Zoom. Zoom is one of them too.
Are those grants in purple on your sheet?
No. Those are the, the, the Canvas software is reimbursed by the Berkshire, I'm, I get this wrong. So Bill, if
Yeah, the Berkshire County Education Task Force has sought money for eight districts in Berkshire County, including Lenox, to subsidize the use of Canvas. And it's on a reimbursement basis. It's not a grant that would show up that we're getting twenty five or fifty thousand dollars as costs accrue. They're submitted to the, excuse me, they're submitted to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which is the fiscal agent. And then we get reimbursed for those costs.
And that's solid through the twenty twenty two fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes, there's a, yeah, the, the, the task force has not had much trouble raising money for, for to support a learning management system platform. People seem to appreciate the importance of it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Melissa?
Just in your pie picture that you showed of eleven million dollars in personnel, and then, you know, nearly two million other expenses, is that personnel, does that include the insurance?
No, it does not.
Okay.
No. When you add in the insurance benefits, it, it bumps that eighty five percent up to about eighty eight percent.
Is there, if I look in the right PDF, will I find what is in that personnel plus?
If you look at the crosswalk, the summary,
Yeah.
there's personnel is listed as a type of expense.
Okay.
All of those would equal that.
Okay, thank you. Saved me about an hour.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Melissa, I, I always find it very confusing. Maybe you can explain again. So the, the increase in the insurance costs, which I know we see every single year, is that factored in with the, the overall increase? Is that the way to look at that, or is it called that out separately?
So I apologize because I may be the one that confuses this because I have, I look at it as the costs that I can control are what I'm, I need a net number on. And that is the thirteen oh nine six eight eight nine number four fiscal year twenty two. I, the town manages the, the benefits. They, they pay that bill. They portion it to the school department for their retirees and their employees. And I'm given that number. So that's why I keep it separate. It needs to be separate in my accounting. But the four point four five percent that you see on the screen now is not with the benefits included. So when you add the benefits included and you look at where we were in twenty one to twenty two, we're at five point oh one percent increase. It's, it's, the town is looking at a fourteen point three number. So we're slightly under two hundred thousand at that fourteen five.
And to be
Over two hundred thousand, one ninety over what they would like.
Okay, so that's the number we would focus on if we're talking about where we're looking for opportunities to kind of dial that back a little. Okay.
Yeah, and to be, to be fair to the process, it's, it's difficult with the insurance benefits. It's difficult to get to three percent. Typically, in recent years, this, this, and I don't know how many years it's been, there've been a zero percent increase in the insurance benefits, but there were years when it was eight to ten percent, maybe even fifteen. And some of that's very difficult to control. And it looks like a very small increase this year, which is, which is good. But historically, it's difficult when you factor the insurance benefits in to come into the three percent that the town manager and finance committee would like us to, to meet.
And it, it's always growing because you, you have, you know, if you think about the exposure, you have, say, five people who have been in the position that I'm doing, still alive, and then you have me. So you have four receiving retiree benefits, and then you have an active person receiving benefits for the job. So as long as retirees are living longer and you have retirees that are moving in, that number is always going to grow. So you start off behind the, behind the goal because you have that natural increase with retirements.
Anything else for Melissa?
No, I appreciate the, I appreciate the slideshow and the PDFs, Melissa. They're very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And let's hope those retirees keep, keep on living.
Yes, definitely. It's good for all of us.
Okay, so Melissa, you can take that off the screen. Thank you. And next on the agenda is a presentation of the strategic plan draft overview. So I want to indicate that the, and I'm gonna share my screen once I figure out, I haven't done this in a few weeks. So bear with me. Are you people seeing?
I can see that.
Page one of the
Yeah, I can't see the whole page of them. I can only see, it's cutting off the last few rows. There we go. Yeah.
Okay, so the people on this, on the front page here have been working since, I believe, not everybody, but we started, I believe, in June of two thousand nineteen. And we've been meeting approximately every three weeks with a couple of months break this summer. And, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of work and a lot of thought has gone into what we're gonna present. But I do want to mention that we will be giving a narrative version of this. This is gonna just highlight the strategies that we've developed. And several of the people who are, were part of this are on the, I happen to notice are on this Zoom meeting tonight. And I, so I want to thank all these people because this has been, you know, a mammoth amount of work and it's, and it's not done yet. But I'm gonna go just fairly quickly because the committee members will have this in their, in their packets. So we've developed a this process we used was to come up with a kind of an if then statement, if the theory of action, you know, if we do this, then this will be the outcome. And, and this, these are difficult to work and difficult to wrestle with. What's the theory of action? And what's the strategy that comes out of it? And you'll see but the, the committee did a great job on this. And so I'm not gonna go through these, you know, word by word, but I do want to just point out to members of the public here that we have one on professional development. And I'm just gonna read the, the blue section, increased staff influence and professional development decisions by establishing a joint faculty administration committee to evaluate district and school goals and plan annual PD in a manner that best meets, you know, both those goals as well as the ongoing needs of teachers for staying current with content and pedagogy. We've developed possible action steps, and we've developed measures of, potential measures of success. So these are all subject to ultimately to the administration, you know, looking this over, figuring out what's, you know, what's manageable in year one, what's manageable in year two, and so on. And we haven't actually finished the measures of success. So you'll see them in some of these strategies and, and not in others. So then we had a finance strategy, and this is largely not gonna be new news. This is something we do every year, as you saw Melissa's presentation tonight. So this won't be, you know, adding to people's work, but it's just a reflection that I think most strategic plans have something relative to finance in them. And I think we felt that we, that we should too. We then had one on leadership. And on this one, we we talk about an elected instructional leadership team at each school on that is a lot of talk about collaborative, collaborative decision making, about shared leadership on, and this was a goal that we've developed around leadership. Strategy we've developed around leadership. Technology. You know, we've certainly seen the need for technology this year, but there's been a lot of concerns that we are using a lot of different platforms. I, I think now that we're using Canvas, and I don't know what it looks like on the ground. So those of you who are teaching it, and those of you who are receiving all this, you may have a totally different idea than what I, than what I know. But there have been a lot of different platforms that, that have been being used. And I know the idea in this strategy is to clarify the resources that best support the LPS instructional program and assist students, faculty, and staff and the wider community in mastering these. And I think as this was being written, and you'll see when we give you the narrative version, you know, a lot of the explanation behind how we got to these, how we got to these strategies. And another one under operations is facilities. And you know, there are definitely facilities needs that need to be addressed. Some of them have been put off because the state's not providing funding for them, like the roofs at, at the buildings. For twenty years, they now say you gotta go to thirty before we'll talk. But some of them are things like the science classrooms at the high school that you know, our superintendent in two thousand seventeen eighteen did an extensive amount of work, but we need to figure out how we could actually get the work that was done in two thousand seventeen eighteen in, in looking at what could happen in those classrooms, for example, and figured out how we can get that to actually happen. And it's not an inconsequential amount of money. So it's, it'll be, it will be competing with other town resources. So you know, but anyway, this is a strategy for that. We have one for curriculum and instruction. And this was driven pretty heavily by the need to make sure that we're giving equity of academic opportunities to maximize student engagement. And, you know, we really want to make sure that we're hitting hitting all students, that all students have that chance of success in whatever direction it is. And along these lines would be, you know, within this area would be the, you know, perhaps the non-college bound students. I mean, it's, we're trying to address every student. And again, it will be up to the administration and faculties to develop the action steps that will help us get there. And then we have inclusivity in the, under a learning environment. And, you know, this really tries to address some of the issues that took place you know, that we, that came to the forefront last spring, that had been taking place over several years, but came to the forefront. So this is the strategy about setting a tone for inclusiveness and creating an inclusive learning environment. And then finally, our final one was on mental health. Because we've recognized through, even prior to COVID nineteen, that there are a number, a lot of stressors that are, that kids are facing, and we want to make sure that we're enhancing social emotional competencies among our students. And, and work was, had begun on this with a previous superintendent and and will, and will continue, but we want to make sure that this is important enough to rise to be one of our strategies. And that, so, so we have eight strategies. I believe that's the last page. We have eight strategies, which is a lot, but we recognize that some are gonna be more prominent. Some are gonna be kind of pro forma things that will take place regardless, like the finance one, that's gonna take place. You know, administratively, regardless of, of, without adding to people's workload. And some of these will be very critical. Particularly, I think, these learning environment ones. And so, again, these will be the kinds of things that we'll need. Will, you know, we, we originally had thought we would be presenting this in September. And the, the, the plan would be two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty five. But with, you know, having an interim superintendent, not having, you know, a new superintendent on board until July. We, and the fact that this whole process has taken, you know, longer for various reasons. Where, you know, we've, we've pushed the five years to be two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty six. So that we, so anyway, these, these are still in work. We're gonna be meeting again on February eleventh to work, continue work on measures of success. But what I'd like the committee to do is any questions you have, concerns you have, send them to me as the chair, such that we can then raise those with the strategic planning committee. And so just on what, what we've presented so far, we will continue to update this as we continue working. And we will at some point send out the full narrative version, which will still be a draft. It won't be the final version that will be presented to the public. We anticipate in March having a a presentation for the community. But we wanted to get But we wanted to get committee feedback first, so.
Bob, should we be offering some feedback now, or you, you want us to wait and email you?
Um.
I've got some significant concerns of what I'm seeing here. I, I appreciate all the work everybody put into this, and I know they started, you know, before the world turned upside down, but I'm a little surprised that this plan, A, doesn't really reflect anything we had in the last five-year strategic plan, which I would think we'd want to try to maintain a very similar course. B, I don't see anything in here about what I think is a major, major thing that's gonna distract the district for at least a year, which is getting our kids back on track after COVID-19. I mean, there's a, that I think is where we're gonna be putting most of our focus and time next year. Well, as soon as we can, I don't know when that'll be. And I don't even see a mention of that in here.
You'll see in the narrative, in the narrative comments, you'll, you'll see it mentioned several times. And you'll also see a summary of the, of the five areas that we worked on in the previous five years and where we feel we were in those and where we feel we need to continue work. So I think there's, there is a, there are connections and, and some coherence that you'll see when we send out the, the full, the full draft report. That won't, that won't necessarily address everything you've mentioned, Bob.
And then I, I don't see a lot about the students in here either, which concerns me some. I mean, I'm, I'm looking, I haven't had, I admit I haven't had time to pour through it in detail. But I, I don't, you know, yeah, I just, I'm surprised, I guess.
The last three are really intended to be really student-oriented. The, the two for learning environment and the, the academic journey are intended to be, you know, very, you know, student outcomes for students. So the, the other five are, are more along the lines of operations. And operations and finance and professional development for teachers. But the, the final three were really the, the ones that were supposed to be student-oriented.
Okay.
So so by all means, you know, send feedback, you know, and/or, you know, my, my anticipated timetable was that our, I don't recall if we have a meeting at the end of February or if it's the first thing in March, but that we would gather feedback and talk about feedback and, you know, at that, at that point. But anything that you can get to us prior to February 11th, we can address it the next strategic planning meeting.
Okay, yeah, I can write some notes. I mean, and somebody brought it up the other night, one of our last school committee meetings, you know, they talked about how COVID really changed the way we do business. Are there opportunities here coming out of the pandemic that we should be trying to capitalize on? Or, or, or take advantage of in some way? And I'm not sure that I'm seeing anything like that in this plan.
No, I think, I think you're right, I mean, most of the, most of the work took place prior to COVID.
Right.
And, you know, we did the survey of the community, the 200 and some odd responses we had were done in 2019. And then we've been synthesizing, you know, that over time, looking at other reports. But you're right, it, it's, it's not as reflective of what we've just gone through.
And I hate to say that, you know, I know people put a lot of work into this, but just like so many other things, the pandemic just screws up the best laid plans.
Yeah.
I, you know, I have a feeling we're gonna need a lot of emotional support for kids when they come back and you know, a strategy for how we get them back into their, into the academic routine and all these things that, it would be great if we could capture that.
Yeah, okay. Pop that in an email to me and we'll definitely bring that up, but, you know, and I'll send it out in advance of. But yeah, this is, that's why this is all still draft and why we're working on it from, you know, we're hoping to have it ready to present to, you know, for the next superintendent, rather than being, trying to force fit it into this year.
I'd also say some of, some of the, you know, I do think that the last three topics are very student-centered, so I think your feedback is useful and we can make sure it's in there. But I am confident with like the mental health component, that things like helping students, you know, get back into the groove of things from this year to, to next would fall into that. But, so I appreciate, I hear what you're saying, but I also think it, it can fit, it fits in the plan.
And I also want to point out that the action steps we have listed here are just suggested action steps. You know, that we, each committee, you know, working on these outlined some possible ones, but they're not necessarily all-inclusive. And, and these may not be the ones that actually get enacted, you know, initially, but they were some suggestions. Anything else on the? So feedback, you know, if you would like us to begin working on trying to incorporate this by February 11th, get feedback in the next couple of weeks. But we'll have it, we'll put this on the agenda for either the late February meeting or first meeting in March for further discussion. Now we gotta figure out how to stop sharing, there we go. Okay. Okay. I want to go to, on to subcommittees, thank you for listening to that lengthy presentation. And again, thanks to all the people working on the strategic planning committee over the last two years. The, I just want to mention the reopening K-1 task force. We met on, I'm not sure when we met, I don't remember the date, it might have been the 11th. Or it was, the dates are kind of bouncing around in my head, I've had a lot of meetings. And we talked about what were the alternatives. We, you'll recall that at the last meeting, we didn't have a proposal to make about reopening because the numbers of students who would have to change classes was going to be somewhere between a quarter and a third of the students, which was untenable in my way of thinking. We met to see what other alternatives might be possible. And to me, the only alternative would have been if we could have kept the kids in their current classes and the teachers teaching the full day, but simultaneously the kids who were in front of them and the kids who were at home. And we know that about 80% of Morris' kids are coming to school. I don't know if that's exactly the numbers in kindergarten and grade one, but because that's just, that happened, you know, after our meeting, but we had a, a couple of faculty members talk about the, the fact that the reason they can do the two forms of instruction as well as they're doing it is because the numbers are small. And it would be difficult, virtually impossible to, to give the individualized instruction with, with having four or five kids remote and 10 kids in front of you. It would be difficult to do that, it's worked because we've had small numbers and would not work as well. So as a result of that, we've decided to not meet again until the first week in March. I, I think it's March 4th, but I could be wrong. And see where things stand with respect to vaccinations at that point, see where things stand with respect to, you know, teachers actually, you know, having, have the, the ability to have kids, you know, more kids in class, fewer at home. And, and what the, what the safety situation might look like in, in March. As just an update, but there were no, there were no further directions to go. If we couldn't do, if we, if we weren't gonna do it because of moving students and we couldn't do it because the faculty felt that this was going to be too difficult to teach both more kids all day long, then we didn't really have any other options to present. But we want to see what happened kind of nationally and locally in terms of vaccinations and, and all of that before we move on. So that's what I had on that. I don't know if any of the other subcommittee meetings have been meeting.
And, oh, I would, I, on the Morris lower task force, I just, I think it was a very robust conversation. And I appreciate that people, that we have this task force in place and that we have, that we're working on it, I think. I guess I just really appreciate the opportunity for the dialogue and communication to be going on, so I wanted to add that.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, which is conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with, with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Without the intent to return?
With no intent to return to public session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make-
Go ahead, Molly.
I'll let you do it, Bob, you can go ahead.
I have to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A2, conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. We will not be returning.
I'll second it.
Okay, this calls for a roll call. Franny?
Francis Sartino, aye.
Bob Munch?
Bob Munch, aye.
Molly?
Molly Elliott, aye.
And then Marie?
Anne Marie O'Brien, aye.
Christine?
Dan Maro, aye.
And myself, Bob Vaughn, aye. And I'd like to thank the public who came tonight. And for school committee, you need to log on and then log on to the executive session option. Thank you very much.
See you in a few minutes.